All right, I call this regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls on Monday, April 19th, 2020 to order. The first item on our agenda is to pledge allegiance to the flag. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Our first, or I guess our second item is to approve the agenda with any additions. There are no additions or deletions this evening, so the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go on to the minutes of our regular city council meeting on April 5th. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to our Committee of the Whole meeting, which was last Monday, April 12th. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. We have a second by Councilor, you were gone last time. What's your name, sir? Councilor Buller.
It's Committee of the Whole.
Oh, that's right. Councilor Buller. Traveling all over the country.
You missed me, though.
I did.
Oh. Me?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
The line.
Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to payments of claims of the city. We have city transfers going to the permanent improvement of $6,000, $66,666.66. That is coming equally from the 601 water and the 603 sewer in the amount of $33,333.33 each. We have money going to Fund 403 Reserve for Capital Outlay, $25,760.42. That's coming from the 601 water in the amount of $19,136.17. And the 603 sewer in the amount of $6,624.25 for a total transfers of $92,427.8. Accounts payable, we have City of International Falls claims of $393,745.34. Airport Commission claims of $4,996.44. And the International Falls Public Library Board claims of $3,647.86. For a total accounts payable or claims of $402,389.64. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution for payments of claims.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to audience. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to bring something up to the council that's not on our agenda? Also, if you're online and you want to bring something up later in the meeting, there is also an opportunity, so please leave a message saying that you do want to bring something up at the end of the meeting. Going to old business, remove from the table discussion of delaying the JLR cold box loan repayment from Coochin County Economic Development Authority. Chair would entertain a motion to remove that from the table.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Did I hear a second from Councilor Buller?
Okay.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion to pull that from the table? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. It is properly before us. Paul Nevinen, you want to come up and give us a brief?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you for having me. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, it's time for an update. Please announce that we will be getting back on track. But just by way of background and history on how we got here, where we're at, we have three cold boxes at our test facility at the airport. The last two were built specifically for Cusper, J. L. Land Rover. The first one in 2012, the second in 2017. And we were a little creative. We were able to use in both of those instances the cost of construction, the D grant, and then the city and county provided the local match, the 50% local match in the form of a 2% loan to KITA. So with your support and help, we've now established these three boxes. Now, we repaid the first loan and we made two payments of Schedule V, the last being 9/26/18. And we tried to time the payments in the fall when we get our JLR lease payment, annual lease payment, as well as our funding from the IRRB coincides and it just helps cash flow. And to be clear, JLR has never missed a lease payment. That's not the issue where we started running into problems. What happened was we had some scheduled project lists at the test facility that annually we spend a lot of money out there. It's not a static, it's a 30-year-old facility, so we're always scheduling things at the request of our customers. So we got kind of caught up in a number of projects that we hadn't anticipated that went over budget. And then our cash reserves began to get depleted as well. We could have made the payment in 2019, but we would have found ourselves in a cash position and would have actually had to come back to the city and county for operational funding in two months. So we sat down with KITA and asked the city and county if they would defer the payments to allow us to get caught up on our cash flow.
Recording has started.
And again, just to remind folks, we get our primary funding from the IRRB, we get about a third of our budget, our operating budget, and the remainder is primarily through COVID testing revenues. So while the city and county don't directly fund us, they provide us an opportunity to generate revenue through testing. So we were scheduled to pick up payments in 2020, and we started hearing back from our test customers that they were canceling the test programs due to COVID. So again, we found ourselves with a lot of uncertainty in front of us. Without that revenue, the ability to pay would be difficult. So again, the city and county were good enough to say, okay, this is an extreme situation, understand. So we were very fortunate to find some additional test customers and groups within some of these companies that took the opportunity and now are going to be return customers. So we are in a position now to get back on payment schedule. We anticipate it will be May or June. That's the other problem, a lot of this is timing. Because these are large companies, some of the terms are 90 days. So by the time we get done and invoice, it sometimes takes that long period to get paid. But again, the good news is we are in position now to get back and file, finish all our payments, the last three payments. I will, when the funds are available, I will just notify Betty and the county that we'll arrange for making payments. So with that, I guess I can answer any questions or concerns?
So there's three payments that still need to be made?
Correct.
Okay, and as you know, there was a little bit of a hiccup. We're going through our city audit right now, and that's one of the issues that brought this to the forefront, that our auditors had some concern because we had this on the table, we were just waiting to find out, and that's why we'd like to have an update. So then I bring it to Betty. Is there anything that we need to do as a council, knowing that there's three payments coming, that we need to have a motion or anything that we acknowledge that we haven't received those payments in the past, but we will be receiving three payments in the future?
Well, I think once they know when they have the funds available, we need to set up a new payment schedule because that will, the interest rate will have to be reflected and recalculated, that's correct, according, you know, to the timing of the payment. So basically, it's acknowledging that the payments have been delayed and in a date in which they will start again and what the next anticipated date, I guess, if that's something you know right now that you could approve.
Unfortunately, yeah. I'm at the mercy of corporate lead time, so, but I'm anticipating on May-June based on, you know, just doing that.
Okay. Councilor Kraus.
I'm just wondering, could we put a date of like July 6th on it? That's our first meeting in July. That gives you the May-June to, do we need to have a date on it?
Well, we need a date to be able to calculate the appropriate interest, but that may be, you know, something we can just do along with when they receive their funding.
So with that being said, I mean, we have a KITA meeting next week, and then there's, I mean, if it's going to be in June, we'll have a little bit of lead time. We have a couple of meetings between now and then. I just want to make sure that we're being forthright to everyone, knowledge, everyone's knowledge that we did have some delay of payments. We have three coming, and we're anticipating those payments in the near future, so. Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, and then just that payment, $39,249.30, will have to be calculated, the interest. Thank you for your support and get back on track.
All right, thank you very much, Paul.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Paul.
So next item that we have is to approve the second and final reading of the contract ordinance 974, accepting the lowest responsible bid for the 2021 local street improvement to Bowman Asphalt Products in the amount of $1,471,909. Chair would entertain a motion for the second and final reading of that contract. We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have the second and final reading of the ordinance of the fifth series to repeal and replace Chapter 3 Municipal and Public Utilities Rules and Commissions, or Rules and Regulations, Rates, Charges, and Collections to Include Updated Sanitary Sewer Language. Chair would entertain a motion for the second and final reading of that ordinance.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech.
Second.
Second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero.
Mayor?
Yes.
Should we also have approval to publish a summary due to the length of that ordinance? And I do have a summary ordinance in your packet that you had for review as well?
Absolutely. So at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to publish the summary of the new ordinance into our local newspaper. Chair would entertain a motion for that summary to be printed.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion?
Mayor, if I may, it will also be posted in the library as well during normal business hours, the full version of the ordinance.
How long does it have to stay posted in the library?
I don't know that answer. It's off the top of my head.
Sounds good. So we have a motion and a second to publish the summary. Call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Go on to new business, approve of hiring summer employees for the Housing Department and Public Works Department as presented. For the Public Works Department, we have Alexis Erickson, Olivia Wright, Chad Werner Strand, Gus Lawrenson, Tanner Sether, Tyler Joe Sears, Madeline Peer, and Avery Savonin. Chair would entertain a motion, oh, I'm sorry, so that would be for Public Works. Chair would entertain a motion for those employees for Public Works.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have for the Housing Department, Brittany Foss. She's worked with us in the past. Chair would entertain a motion to hire Brittany Foss for the Housing Department.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. I believe we had a very quick second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to approve the final, I'm sorry, financial planning agreement with Northland Securities for tax increment financing housing district for the Alexander Baker Project. Betty, you wanted to give us just a quick overview of this?
Sure. The Alexander Baker Project is a project to rehabilitate that portion of the building for affordable housing. They are currently looking at grants and other sources of funding. Due to the other two projects that we're currently working on, tax abatement, there's no funding available for that, so we are looking at the TIF option for them, and they were acceptable to that. So if the council so chooses, we could be moving forward with that process with this group.
All right, does anyone have any questions on this? All right, then the chair would entertain a motion to approve the financial planning agreement.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? I would just like to say, you know, we have a lot of projects that are moving forward right now, and the fact that we have locked out our tax abatement is pretty interesting because we haven't been in that position. But to be able to still utilize other resources to be able to help out for these projects, I think is good, and the team, as we discussed, is very familiar with TIF financing, so I think of all people to utilize it, it's in good hands for the knowledge base of those using it. So I'll call the question at this time.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, consider the agreement for the use of Smokey Bear Park for a community market each Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00, beginning on May 29th through September 2021. Teresa.
Betty, I think this gentleman forgot that, eh?
No, it's for the microphone. It's okay.
Oh, okay. Hey, at least I was thinking. Last week, we discussed about the insurance, and I got an insurance proposal, which I think you know everything. I've got you guys listed as the additional insured. And today, Betty and I were talking about a layout, and we would do over by the van stand area on that side of the shelter. We would have one food truck, as far as I know as of right now, but we would have that one part close to the sidewalk so there's no going, driving on the grass or, you know, very minimal to get the truck in and out. When I say food truck, I'm talking trailer. So other than that, we've got our vendors, as you know, Harley, you know a lot because I invited you into our group. We got our vendors excited about it. You know, we got the community so far, a lot of support. Now it's just up to the council to give us the permission to use it.
Okay, and I, and I'm excited about it. I think that that's one of the things that is fantastic, to have these community markets and having a destination for people on the weekends, other than just our normal day-to-day businesses, having a, having it in the park, having it near Smokey Bear, trying to draw people to the museum, having a destination in the heart of International Falls is fantastic. I did speak with Betty before the meeting, and I guess you guys had discussed that plan, the layout, the layout for the thing.
Yes.
I think there's just a little conversation that needs to go on between you guys and Public Works, so I would make the recommendation to the council, as I discussed with Betty earlier today, to approve the agreement and have the staff in Public Works work with Teresa just for the setup. So pending that, the setup with Public Works and Teresa and staff approve the agreement. Chair would entertain that motion as such.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor, I'm sorry, Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Any concerns that you have with that?
Honestly, no. I read the agreement over. I don't see anything. Harley, you know how I am, I'm very strict, you know, with the things Betty and I talked before the meeting also today. I have no questions, nothing about the, for Saturdays.
Okay, sounds good. Then I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, five zero.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have another land use agreement. This is for the City of International Falls and Rainy Lake Aquatics to utilize City Beach for kayak and paddleboard landing area. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that land use agreement.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Discussion.
Mayor, Aaron is on the line, I think he wanted to speak.
Oh, please, Aaron.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. I was able to join by Zoom today.
Great. Do you have anything to bring forward?
Yeah, there were two additional items I was hoping to add if I was approved to do the rentals off of City Beach. And then the first one was if we were going to be able to add any sort of signage to the area, just providing information on how to contact us, you know, what we offer. There's a little bit of information about the medallion hunt. We had some professional signs made by Bob French, so they do look really nice, but wanted to bring that up and see if, you know, we were able to put any in the park or on the beach.
Okay, we, at the meeting that we had discussed, the city doesn't allow any businesses to put signage on city property. There's no advertising, so it's the same thing with the last group that we just worked with. They had also requested to have signage about the community market in the park, and that is not, that is not anything that the city has done previously, nor do I think we're looking at doing it this time. It was the recommendation of the Public Works to not allow that.
Oh, absolutely. I apologize if I didn't hear that part with the community market piece. Not a problem. This is the second part was going to be, we were hoping to do some sort of kickoff event and maybe like the first Saturday in June. Last year, to kind of kick off the business, we had offered a full month of free rentals to the community and tourists in the area. And this year, we still wanted to do at least something similar, but for a full day, we wanted to bring all the equipment. We thought City Beach would be the best area. Along with the free rentals for the day, we also want to be doing like demonstrations and some coaching and some different things like that to individuals who maybe have never tried paddleboarding or kayaking. And then there's some situational stuff too, as far as, you know, getting back in a kayak if it happens to roll over and things like that that are kind of good to know. So we were hoping to offer that one of the days there in June if it was able to work.
How does that, I guess I gotta defer to the city administrator. How does that work for the insurance piece of this, if they're going to be doing demonstrations and other than just having a drop-off and pickup spot?
Well, as long as he would still have his insurance requirement met, I don't think that would be an issue.
Okay, and with that being said, I guess I don't have an issue with that. Council's thoughts on that?
As long as there's no liability, I have no problem.
Right.
Okay, do we need to have a motion as such on that? I can't imagine. I guess we definitely should.
I would advise that.
Some amend the original to include the demonstration day?
Okay, Councilor Kraus is willing to consider the agreement and the use of City Beach with the amendment to allow the training and you stay there. Councilor Holden, you have a problem with that?
No, I don't have any problem.
Okay. Anything else, Aaron?
No, I believe that was everything.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, well, thank you, Aaron. I, again, just like the community market, I love having more, more things available in the community, and I think that this is fantastic, so thank you. I'll call the question.
Thank you, guys.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time.
Aye.
No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have Committee of the Whole recommendations. The first one is to approve our request for proposal for Flattery and Hood PA to provide a job classification and compensation system study. Betty, you want to just give a little background on that?
Yep. A while back, we had done a study of our job compensation, and the last one we have done was probably 20 to 25 years ago. Definitely need to have that updated as per the pay equity guidelines and requirements. And therefore, you, we had designed a working committee of staff, department heads, and Mayor yourself, and we went out for proposals as per the council's direction. We received five applications to do this study for us. The range of fees was $20,000 to $43,000 for this study. And what it's going to do is it's going to go through all of our jobs, all of the different job descriptions, get them in line and order, putting the pay equity in order along with comparable cities and other things with the state of Minnesota as the requirements of the pay equity. And the committee chose Flattery and Hood, and not only were they the cheapest, but they floated to the top for all of us in our working committee. And so therefore, that's why we have, they followed up on references, and the references were very good as well for this organization, this firm.
All right, so with that being said, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the request for proposal from Flattery and Hood to do our job classification and compensation system study.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion. Betty, how long is this process going to take?
Probably about six months. It's a very lengthy, in-depth process, depending upon how fast or how slow we ask them to go. We can ask them to slow down the process if we feel as this organization, we need time, and I'm afraid with the status we're in with our staffing, I'm going to probably ask that we slow it down a little bit just for our own sanity, but.
Fair enough.
So it's going to take at least six months.
All right, I appreciate that. And once we get the results, how long until sometimes you have to implement those results once they come in?
Well, that's entirely up to you as a council, once you see what that may or may not be and what the options are. It varies.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the classification study. Call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, approve paying ServiceMaster bills for three properties on 14th Avenue for sanitary sewer backup due to a staff suggestion. Just to, I don't, is, do we have any members of the public that are here to discuss this specifically or online? All right, hearing none, I'm just going to give a little background of what has happened. On 14th Avenue, we did have some sewer backup into homes. Public Works went there and sure enough, found that the main was the culprit of the situation. It had been backed up with wet wipes or paper towels, wet wipes basically. It had been backed up with wet wipes or paper towels, wet wipes basically. We did submit all of it to our insurance. Our insurance said that with the, the records that the city has kept over the course of the last years, we service that annually. It has been cleaned. We are not at fault in any capacity. We do not have to pay the ServiceMaster bills. However, given the set of circumstances in which it happened and the city staff had told some of the homeowners to get ServiceMaster to get in there and clean it out, we, we feel that it's our duty to pay those bills from that because it was the main of International Falls. With that being said, because our insurance has said that we're not liable, we just want to make sure that this is being done because it's the right thing to do from the city, but we are not accepting any liability for the, for the backup due to the maintenance that we've done in the past and as determined from our insurance provider. Anything I missed on this one?
Nope, got it covered.
All right, so the chair would, please.
I think one thing we need to point out too is that we're not setting the precedence on this. This is a one-time thing and that's it.
Right.
That's important.
Yep, yep.
Question?
Please.
Do you get it in the city ordinance that backfill program?
I, I don't know the answer to that at this time. I guess we could find out and.
That has, but they're four, so that how houses are supposed to have them and the sewer won't back up into your, and it's probably, I know when we still installed some along 17th Street, they had to have them there. So.
Yeah.
If it's in ordinance, if it's in ordinance and houses should have them, maybe you don't have these problems.
Yeah. And with that being said, those are things I can look into, we can look into. I, I just don't know off the top of my head. I, I appreciate that, Mayor Wagner, and I'm sure that.
I'm just a taxpayer. I'm not a mayor.
Oh, well, I appreciate that too.
Just saying, yes. I don't like to waste taxpayers' money.
Yeah.
You know, cleaning up somebody's sewer, they didn't have the backfill program and the book to have it.
Yeah. So chair would entertain a motion to approve paying those ServiceMaster bills. We have a motion by Counselor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Vote yes, motion carries, five zero.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, Rob Pastor was asking online, does that set a precedence going forward?
No, it does not, and we. Yeah, it does not set a precedent. Public Works Committee recommendations, approve partnering with Independent School District 361, Community Education and Falls Hunger Coalition for an expansion of the community garden to Carson Loopy Playground and Location. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Deitch. Do we have a second? We have a second by Counselor Bowler. Discussion?
Carson, go ahead.
Please.
Carson Loopy's ideal place. When we talked about this before, I was thinking in the back of my mind, this is where it should go.
Yeah. And let me just give a little bit of a background on this. It was discussed with, at the Public Works meeting at the last, when Dan had brought it up to Committee of the Whole or to the last council meeting, my, my days are all mixed up. Anyways, we did refer it to Public Works because that's the one who's going to be working with the project. Myself, Ted Brokaw and the city administrator sat through, we ended up calling Dan and asking him a handful of questions. We were really trying to determine what makes the most sense for the community garden in the future. And what we, we were looking at is over at Carson Loopy, that area is, is, has access to water. So we thought that would be a good thing. It has access to the, has access to the playground, which is adjacent to where we're looking at putting it up. We'll be able to fence that in so that deer are unable to get to it. It's a bigger area, so we can put out larger plots for the future. It made a lot of sense, but there were also concerns with, with the spot where the community garden is now, which is there's no parking. The Men's Garden Club, as I understand it, used to deliver water over there. However, with the Men's Garden Club no longer being in existence, it's fallen onto the city to deliver water twice, if not three times a week. If we move in the long run over to Carson Loopy, then it has access to water. We don't have to worry about that anymore. You can turn on the water as needed. There is also then concern of, you know, what do you do with the community garden where it is? And I think the Public Works Director was pretty clear that we have no interest in getting rid of the community garden where it sits. However, if you give up one of your, your plots or your land there, we will remove that and you can move it to the other place. So as long as you continue to take care of the plot that you have over there, you'll continue to be able to utilize that piece. That was the, the conversation that we had. It made sense for Dan, it made sense for the city. And we're not trying to get rid of anybody's place where they're gardening now. It's just a, it's a matter of where do we want to be in five years or 10 years? And we want to have one area of the community that's really well set up for a community garden. So that was, that was the recommendation that came out of Public Works. That's the conversation that we had with Mr. McGonigal. And I know that there has been some concern, but we're trying to work through some of these problems to enhance the program for the future. Any other, any conversation or discussion? Please, come on up.
So for the record, Ariana Daniel, I've been in front of you several times before as Executive Director of Servants of Shelter. But my first time ever being in the city council chambers was with the original group that started the community garden as it now stands. And so I think a lot of the concern came because it felt like when we went through the process, and it was a long, community-driven process of starting the community garden, it was all very open, it was very transparent. There was a lot of surveying of interest and need. We did look at several locations. The, the Third Street location was not the preferred location of the council at the time. They were concerned about the plots being abandoned, of it being an eyesore, of it, you know, being not something we want on the city, on this main street. However, that has not turned into what it's been. It's been a real, I would say, success in the community. We are aware that we do face some issues with the water and parking, which is, you know, and signage. And I think that those things can all be addressed. I would just ask that, one, we take into account, two, we have eight fruit trees there that were planted by guard, community members and children who've kind of grown up in the last six years watching those trees. And that's part of the community garden is actually a community orchard, which we came in front, probably the fourth time we came in front of the city council and got permission for six years ago. And so that we not disregard that because I know that there has been talk in the past of perhaps taking out those trees for additional parking. And I just really wanted to bring that to the city council, that those, those trees were planted with the intention and have been heavily invested in by our youth who are, who planted them and then are now watching them grow. The other, which is, we just want to make sure that, because food access is such a thing that most of us gardeners are so passionate about and it's something that we all can, especially in some parts of our community, which have less access to fresh produce than others, definitely see the need for that. I just want to make sure that we go through the same open and public process so that we make sure, one, that we have enough support in any location that we put this, put an additional garden in, that we have the base that we need to make it successful. Because that does, it does require, especially if we're looking at a different model, it does really require that a lot of community members be invested in doing the garden and upkeep. Because that is all done by members who do the, besides the, the mowing, that is done by city, by city work. The, the maintenance of the beds and the flowers and all, you know, and the, are done by the gardeners there. So just excited for what's to come in the future, but just want to make note that there is quite a bit of community interest. And I think we could have avoided a lot of the upset that I think many of you have been hearing the last few days if we just, if we just have public meetings that invite, besides city council, public forum times, but times to help plan as we move forward. And I did talk to Dan today about that as well and just said, you know, so much can be avoided if everyone's invited, all the stakeholders are invited to join. And then we don't even know how many other people are going to be interested in being part of this. Because one of the things in the planning process of being on Third Street was that we, most community gardens, the gardeners are within three to five blocks of the garden. That's when it works best, is when people, and that's one of the reasons why Third Street was such an effective location, was because of the density of housing and because of how many rentals there were. There were enough gardeners who could not garden where they were at, to garden there. And so when we had looked at an alternate location by the high school, we had surveyed that area and there wasn't the interest because people had ample, most of them are homeowners and most of them had ample garden space in their yard, that they did not show any interest in participating in community garden. So we just take all of that, all the knowledge that we've built over the years and all of that into things when we plan for a new project so that it can be really successful. That's all I would ask.
No, thank you.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Dan McGonigal. I'm the Community Education Director and I'm the, the cause of a lot of this concern. This, this originated with the fact that I have a grant sitting on my desk, ready to go, and I just needed a location. I felt like this is an opportunity for the community to provide for some of those that are less fortunate, that might not have the experiences having gardened. And maybe I put the cart before the horse in terms of, okay, who's going to maintain the garden, who's going to help learn? But I, I had leave enough in my, my ability to hopefully recruit and hopefully provide some learning opportunities for our students. Most, most top of mind was with our fax class, right? So they learn some of the skills and things like that. And then the community wins by being able to receive healthy foods and vegetables and fruits. The Rotary is interested in donating some apple trees, should be finding a location. I, I never meant to cause anybody any of these headaches on either side, whether it's the people that currently have gardens or yourselves as county, as council. Some of the phone calls and things that we've gotten, both Ashley and myself, it's almost like we're kind of saying, well, maybe I need to look at other ways to use the grant money. So, you know, I hate to walk away from the opportunity. It's, it's a chance to bring outside money to our community, but, you know, I certainly don't want to ruffle feathers and get into any of the political weeds that seem to have grown up, pardon, pardon the pun on the weeds, but there's been a lot of, lot of stuff that's kind of crept up as a result of this request. And my apologies to those of you who have had to go through it for the last couple of days. My apologies to Ashley. It really was just a request that I've got an opportunity to get some money for our community sitting there with a grant and I just needed a location.
Okay. So are you, are you requesting us to not move forward with this?
Well, I, I mean, I certainly can be respectful of the, of the community members' requests for, for more transparency. I don't want my office to be entangled in any of those politics. And if, if that is the request that they're making, then yes, I'm, I'm requesting to back away at the moment just based on, and unfortunately, it's a two-year grant funding cycle, so that means two years would, would be the, would be the timeline. But I'm not, you know, I, I don't really want to bait any of these headaches for any people based on being accused of not coming forward or being less than transparent regarding it. And I don't feel like that was the process. It wasn't meant to take anything away from anybody, but that was the way it's been interpreted. So I just would like to say, yeah, my, my apologies for that and step back, I guess, at this point.
Well, I, I think we can work together on this one. I think we can do Carson Loopy and I also think we can keep where the existing spot is. There's a lot of good reasons why Carson Loopy's good. It's got water, it's got parking, it's got playground, equipment for kids, should be able to be fenced so the deer can't get into the crops and stuff, right? I, I don't see why we can't do both, you know, and make this thing more peaceful.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Mike. I mean, that, and I think that was the fear, right? Like that something was being taken away and that was never my intention. And I understand the concerns in terms of, well, now who's going to care for this one? I felt like the water and the conversations that the mayor, myself and Ted had and whoever else was in the room that day. You know, I, I, I can sympathize with the water aspect because I got quite a few phone calls last year in the current location. And, you know, I, I don't have the resources in my office to, to maintain watering or providing water for the folks to water. So, yeah, I mean, that's, I guess, could be the best outcome, Mike, is, is Counselor Holden is to, you know, make and have signage that really indicates that this is a community garden that anyone can help themselves to. And hopefully they would then help themselves with the, the planting and weeding and harvesting and watering as well, right? Like everybody lean in, help and, and enjoy the free vegetables and fruit as a result of it.
Unfortunately, we're living in a world where there's a lot of division at this time. And here's a chance to bring it together and be peaceful about it. Both places could be done. And that's my opinion. So I don't know about the rest of the board or city council, but that's all I feel about. I've seen so much division in the last few years that it's time to start mending the bridge. That means bringing it together. And I think Carson Loopy would be a good spot along with this over here.
So Dan, I, I just have to ask, is it still your interest to rescind your request?
No, I can withdraw that, Mr. Mayor. The, the grant's ready to go and, and has been ready to go for about a month. You know, I need a, the location and, you know, I felt the current location made the most sense originally based on, you know, but people were concerned that there'd be, it would be harder to interpret, okay, whose, whose plot is whose, right? Like which ones, which one can people help themselves to and which one is my own individual growing location? So I feel like, yeah, this is, this is a very admirable outcome. I, I just don't want to ever be accused of being the reason why somebody's garden was, which is, that's what the last three days of my work life have been. And, and, you know, that's, that's what I'm trying to avoid, I guess. We, we've been contacted quite liberally regarding this issue and I'm sure you all have too. And I'm trying to be as navel-y as I can and I don't really want to move to a new area and be the bad guy. So kind of got out of the newspaper business because I was tired of politics. Don't really want politics to enter my current role.
Fair enough. And, and what we are looking at doing right now is the community garden for, to work with the, the food shelf. And that's essentially what we're looking at doing over at Carson Loopy. And I, I appreciate where, where Counselor Holden's coming from. And I think we can, it's my, it's my position, we can move forward with the, with the grant and the paperwork you're doing. And we can still address some of the issues that we have on Third Street with the, the traditional community garden. If you're acceptable, acceptable to that, I think the council is as well.
Yeah, that sounds good. I appreciate it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to move forward with the grant. Chair would entertain a motion or call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. And myself and Betty and Ted, I, I know that you've been working with, with the Public Works Director. If we could continue working through this, we will probably solve some big problems with hunger in the community, so I look forward to that. All right, next is to accept and approve the 22nd Street feasibility report and schedule a public hearing for Monday, May a public hearing for Monday, May 10th, 2021. Chair would entertain a motion for the feasibility study and approve the report. And the May 10th is our committee of the whole date. And I would suggest we do the public hearing at four o'clock at our committee of the whole and then we'll just move forward with the rest of our business after that. So the chair would entertain a motion to accept and approve and have the public hearing Monday, May 10th at 4:00 PM. We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deitch. Betty, do you want to give up just a little bit of background on this one?
With the 22nd Street, the BDPI grant that was accepted, this is the next step in the process, having, accepting the feasibility study as put together by Woodseth, our engineering firm, and then moving forward to a public hearing. So the affected parties understand what their assessments will be along with the city as an owner of part, part of the property over there and what the, what they'll be responsible for going forward as well as what the BDPI grant is paying on their behalf as well.
Any questions for the city administrator?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Actually, I'd like to make a point. As much as I hate to, to give us extra meetings, a public hearing at four o'clock just doesn't sound attendable to me. I like our public hearings at the regular city council time at five thirty. I know that that, I know that we already have a meeting that day at four o'clock, but if you're going to expect individual property owners to attend a, a public hearing, I feel like it should be later in the evening to accommodate the potential work schedules. Four o'clock is, that's still during the workday as far as I'm concerned. It's just my opinion on the matter. It doesn't, they don't have to agree. I'm just saying.
Councilor Bowler, do you have a problem with moving it to 5:30?
Not at all.
Okay. Councilor Deitch?
No, I'm fine.
All right. Both of you are willing to amend your motion?
Yes, on the, on the tap yet, right?
Yep.
Okay, 5:30.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Then I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next is just some council information. The shrubs and the plantings located on Third Avenue and 11th Street, right next to Holiday Gas Station with the Highway 53 project, all of those have to be taken out, but they are brand new. So we're going to take those out and we're going to put them over at the high school on city property. This is just council information. It's, it's just internally being done through Public Works, but that way we're not losing those. They're just being relocated in the city. And then the next item is to accept the letter of retirement from Police Chief Mastin. Chair would entertain a motion to accept his letter of retirement.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Hey, we have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion? Well, we've, we, as a city council, found out about this last week at our committee of the whole meeting. Chief Mastin came and just informed us that this would be coming. So it didn't come as a shock. I appreciate all the hard work. And one of the things that I even brought up to him when, at that meeting is when he got first put in as the police chief, one of the things he really wanted to do is to try to engage with our, our local community and have the officers engage more with the local community, which I think is one of the things we're really missing out on in this world today. However, we did have the, the community night out in the park, but he really took it to the next level by having the police officers there and law enforcement in, in general and trying to do that and get more involvement with the community as, with the police. Then COVID happened. So that kind of slowed down quite a bit. But with that being said, I do really appreciate everything that he's done. And I, I do accept his letter of retirement, but with that being said, it's with a heavy heart because he has done a lot in a short amount of time as the police chief. So this just starts a process of, of looking for a new police chief. And I'll bring that up next under any other business. So anyone else have anything to add about the retirement of Chief Mastin? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, because of Chief Mastin, his, his pending retirement, we do need to post job opening for the City of International Falls for the position of police chief. The full-time salary for the position in 2021 is 73,000 to, 73,956 to 92,445. And then all the information that goes in there, the interviews would be taking place the week of May 24th. And the applications would be due by, oh man, I missed that. Applications would be due by May 14th at noon. The advertisement dates for the, for this position would be April 22nd and April 29th. So the chair would entertain a motion to publish the opening for police chief. So we have a motion by Councilor Deitch. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries five zero. Any other business to come before the city council? Hearing none, we'll go on to the re- Todd?
Yes, Jimmy, in from small town this year. I'm just wondering about this new voice that was, that we turned in last week.
It's in the tables, isn't it?
Have you heard it mentioned in the, the list of, of tables from this?
Yeah, that, that you were part of the 3, 340,000.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, we don't read off every one.
I was, I was going to ask during open forum, whether you had any questions about the system and stuff. Todd, I agree that it's complete. I'm very happy with it and that, so we're not on the agenda, so.
We actually do have one concern. I will hand this over to Councilor Kraus.
We can't mute this on BlueJeans. Cannot mute BlueJeans on this. The whole, the whole point of the tablet was to prevent us from having to turn around to look at BlueJeans. And unfortunately, if you have it up on here, it is, it's impossible. You cannot mute it.
And so therefore we get feedback on-
Feedback loop, so it's just sitting here.
How can I address that with me? You were, um, how can I look into it?
I can do it on here and I can do it on my iPad. Can't do it on this tablet.
It's extremely, extremely strange. How can you do that? We discuss that after or?
I shut, yeah, I shut the sound right off. I put it on like air, like quiet mode, like nothing, but it leaves just a little bit and then you get a feedback loop, which is just, it's annoying more than anything.
So, yeah, if you guys want to look at that after the meeting or at a later time, that's fine. That is a concern that we have. That's the only concern I think we have with the system. Does anyone else have any issues with the system? And after you spoke at the last meeting, we, it, it got fixed. I don't know what it was. Your booming voice that blew out the speaker?
I thought I was just talking normally, but you accused me of-
It was all you, Steve. You started talking and it was gone. So.
After, after we got out last night, that microphone there, it needs to be more sensitive or make sure it's held up to the person that's talking because at that one point, I couldn't hear a word he said, but he moved it up closer, everything came through clear. So whether it needs to have more sensitivity, whether it needs to be made sure reminded that in front of you when you talk or whatever, but we owe that to the public to be able to hear what everybody's saying.
Absolutely. And sometimes that falls on me because even with the two gentlemen that just spoke in the back, there's no way that they were heard online. So I have to be more demanding that you come and speak directly into the mic. Please.
And if I may, I also, and, and not to point directly at you guys either, but it goes for you guys as well, sitting there, like yours is turned away from you. Yours isn't quite, when you talk, you turn your head the other way. So your voice is sometimes unheard. So unfortunately, it goes for you guys as well because we've heard this from the feedback from the public as well. And when we're listening to our, to the video ourselves. And so we all need to be, you know, and here I am not talking directly in mine. We all need to be aware of that when we're speaking that it, to help for those of, in the audience and on, you know, in the telecommunications.
Yep, yep. I, I agree. We all have to get better at it. But besides that, I think the system has worked very, very well.
We do have feedback from someone online. Rob Astor has stated throughout the evening that there's a lot of ringing in the background. And I know Todd was looking at it earlier, but he's still hearing it. So.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to reports of the administrator, attorney and department heads. City administrator?
I have nothing further to add this evening.
Okay. City attorney?
I'll adjust the microphone here so I'm speaking directly into it through my muzzle. You did, I think, have in front of you an updated report on the pending criminal blight cases. We are making some progress. There were three criminal cases that were moved from the pending to the resolved, just for, actually happened today. And we have several cases that are being heard tomorrow in front of Judge Wolf. Several of those, I've spoken with an attorney for two of them and we're making progress on those. So I think the word is getting out that we're serious about this and that life as it's been for many, many years in the community with regard to how you maintain your property and what you place on it, is changing. And people are going to have to comply with those ordinances. And if they don't, there'll be consequences. And met this morning with Jared and Kelly and several of the properties that have been problem properties for many, many years, it looks like they're in the process of cleaning them up. And, and May 11th is the next court day we have after tomorrow. And on that date, we actually have almost every single case that's not resolved is going to be handled that day. So we are making progress. And I'm, I'm very encouraged by that. And the, the staff, again, I've said this before, but Jared is, is doing a wonderful job with, with this aspect of his fire marshal position. He, he really is staying on task and we're having follow-through, which I think was the main problem in the past. We'd start a conversation with the property owner and maybe send a letter and do some, you know, start it, but then never got followed through with. So I think now what's changed is the follow-up. And I think that we're going to have a much nicer looking community in the future because of these actions that the council has taken. Also, a number, just working on a number of issues with Betty and other department heads to get things finalized with a number of projects and things that are going on. And it's a very busy time. And I know Betty's really under pressure because of all the different things that got thrown at her at once. But Betty's been a real pleasure to work with as well and is doing a great job from my perception. And I, I want to thank her for being so easy to work with. Any questions at all for me?
No.
Yes, please.
It's probably more so for Mr. Schimon than it is the rest of us, but it involves all of us. May 1st is coming up and I see that Friends of Garbage has sent a letter asking for an extension. I think this is something we have to talk about.
I think we have a meeting scheduled for later this week to, to discuss that. And we, the extension that we gave them previously was for May 1st.
Correct.
And, but I, you know, and I, and I think that there, some progress has been made. There's a lot more progress to be made. And, but I, I think that what I suggested to them was that they needed to provide us a firm timetable on dates where various things. And we started out with three different properties. I think there's been real good progress maybe on one of the three and there's more to be done on, on a couple of them.
Wasn't the timetable established when basically May 1st was the timetable for all three properties? I guess I've been on, on the council and I've been pushing blight for the last two and a half years. And I know that location has been brought up numerous times before I was on the council. I guess, I guess we've got to ask ourselves, how many times are we just going to pass this on and say, okay, go a little bit longer? I, I have deep concerns about this.
Well, and, and there's certainly no requirement that, that that extension be granted. And one of the options that is available under our ordinance, and this is something we've, I've talked about with Adam and Kelly and Jared, we've all talked about it, is that if a situation is not corrected, the city has the ability to correct it. And that can be done with our own staff or that can be done by hiring a third party, which we do on a smaller scale. This would be a larger scale than, than we've done in the past. But we could go in and correct the situation through paying a private contractor and require them to pay the costs of that contractor. So that's certainly an option that, that's there.
Can I just take, take one real, real quick point? I just want to point out what, what is happening on Thursday. So since that letter has came out, coming back from Friends with their seeking an additional request for time, it has came to my attention, it came to the, the fire marshal and to the city attorney and to the, the city administrator. With that being said, the four of us are going to meet on Thursday to come up with a recommendation for the city council on Monday. With that being, or for the, the first meeting in May. It, it is not necessary that the council accepts the recommendation that the group of us four come up with, but we are going to come up with a recommendation for the council to move forward, whether it is extending an additional timeframe, whether it's cleaning up the property as the city attorney is suggesting, or I believe another option would be to revoke the, the conditional use permit. With that being said, that's what, we're going to meet on Thursday. We'll be giving a recommendation to the council. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that we, the council still can accept it or deny whatever the recommendation is. But that's what we're doing as a team is to come up with a recommendation for the council.
Okay. With the attempt to staple me, I'm going to continue on.
Let me, let me just also, before you get too further, Councilor Deitch, is the next time that they are scheduled to be in court on the pending criminal case is May 11th. So that case is pending. There are two cases, one against the husband and the wife. And we've not, you know, that's still moving forward. That's there. There's been nothing reported to the judge. There's been nothing, no commitment. The only commitment we made to them was that we would delay their criminal proceedings till after May 1st so they had an opportunity to correct the problem. And so that's, that's where we're at in, in here. Well, it's probably a, a month or so ago, Jared indicated to me that he wasn't seeing any progress. So I wrote them a letter, I think maybe, maybe sent a copy of the letter to all the councilmen, asked- asking them, uh, to let us know, you know, what's happening, because we didn't, we didn't want to get to May first and all of a sudden find out that, that nothing was happening. Uh, and I think that's what prompted the letter that they sent that indicated they'd made some progress, but they're going to, you know, there were some excuses given as to why it wasn't going to all be done by May first. Um, but I think, again, Thursday, uh, we can have those discussions, and, and there are alternatives, and, and, uh-
I thought the letter, I read it, Steve, and I, I looked it over, and I, I thought they, they kind of did make their case that they had issues, how, why it didn't get done. And I've known that family for a long time. I know you can't just say that, but I have. And when I got that and I read that, I thought, well, they're working towards getting it done, they're trying their best. And so-
Christ, it's been three years.
Hey, Dennis.
My, my-
Hold it, Mr. Wagner, would you come up, please?
Yes. Give me a break on that, Mike.
I know you got a building close by, but-
Hold on, hold on, I'm going to let-
Okay, let me address the council on this. The person who knows deadline probably nobody better than me. They, they damage contracts, you keep extending this, it should have never required that. You guys got a list of their qualifications and specifications that he was supposed to attend, attend to when he was making his site. Who's going to inspect this? Are they going, did Jared go to inspect this to make sure they're right to the compliance that you guys issued him to? Because my taxes have gone up in that place two and a half times, and you build a garbage dump next to me and let it run off. Who's going to compensate us for all the, with lost property values? Christ almighty, this is ridiculous. Every time we go to move the lawn, we have to go pick up garbage, and now they say you can't get it done. Why didn't you start last fall, when you, when you guys been over there? Mr. Deech was over there last spring with me. That's a year ago. I mean, you have to tell him, threaten him with a lawsuit before anybody does this stuff?
I just thought it was good that they sent a letter. Just a minute now, Dennis, let me talk to him.
Let, let him speak, he, he let you speak.
You and I have been, we've known each other for a long time, right?
Yes, Mike.
Okay. So, I thought it was a good letter, they were trying their best to show that they are working towards that. Now, I don't know what the proper way to sit down with them and try to make amends, but, um, if it's gone for a year, yeah, that's too long, I agree with that.
They're nice people, I know.
Yes, they are, very nice people, and-
What you've got here, guys, you're trying to tell a garbage man that garbage is not a problem. It is a problem, it's a serious problem. You've got to understand it.
Yeah.
You can't tell them, hey, garbage, pigs don't smell.
I understand that, yeah.
That's the problem here.
But I did like the fact that you did come up with a letter.
Addressing it after you threaten me with a lawsuit or-
Well, sometimes, sometimes that's what happens, you know, I mean, if it's not moving fast enough, then you crank it up, but at least we got something that I could read and see why it was holding them up. Now, sitting down with them, hey, I'd love to sit with them. I'd love to sit with them and visit with them.
It should have never got all the compliance to start with.
Right.
As soon as you guys seen this stuff coming in here, somebody should do something. Why does somebody have to run off the curb and get killed before you address the curb? You know, that's, when you see these problems, jump on right away, they're ulcers, they don't go away. Mr. Deech come with there last spring, and we-
Yeah, Leon's, Leon's done a good job. Hey, Dennis, Leon's done a good job, he's pushed for blight control, the whole bit. Steve's done a good job. We're all in this council trying to do a good job. Part of it is, we got to be able to-
That's all I'm saying, you're taking it too long, you don't take that long, clean it up.
Well, I think he's, he's got a-
All right, guys, we've had, we have had enough discussion on, on this. Big picture, there's going to be a conversation, there will be a recommendation to the council on, uh, the first meeting in May. We are meeting on Thursday to, uh, have a discussion of what the city's position is moving forward. We'll have a recommendation for the council, uh, at the first meeting in May.
Okay.
All right, anything else? No, Mr. Mayor, thank you. All right. Uh, department heads. All right, you do have, uh, uh, the police report and the fire EMS reports, uh, reports of the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions? Anybody? I just wanted to, uh, let you guys know, I had a conversation with, uh, Mayor Culle from, uh, Fort Frances. She has contacted me in regards to, um, the international bridge. Uh, Resolute Paper, uh, is looking to sell their half of the, uh, bridge, which is a concern for them, definitely a concern for us as well, um, pending, uh, who purchases it, which is the hundred thousand dollar question at this point, what that does for transit between International Falls and Fort Frances and tolls. M D N W owns our portion, and Resolute owns their portion. Uh, unique situation, um, our bridge and the bridge in Windsor, Ontario are the only privately-owned bridges on the Canadian-American border, so there is, uh, some conversation that's going on to try to get, uh, governmental entity in Fort Frances to purchase their side. There's also, um, some concern on their part to see if, uh, a governmental entity would be interested in purchasing our side. I had a brief discussion about this with, uh, Councillor Kraus earlier, and he had a really good point that, uh, in our comprehensive plan, we actually have a possibility of moving the bridge, um, and if that was to be moved, what that would look like too. So, as of right now, it's just information for, uh, the council that that is a concern, um, for our area. There is nothing in concrete that it is being sold, I got to be very clear. It is a concern that they have that, uh, that that portion of the bridge may sell. So, those are just, uh, some conversations, I wanted to make sure that the council was knowledgeable about the conversations that are happening. Um, besides that, uh, I just want to remind you guys that we do have, uh, public hearings next week. On Monday, we have a public hearing for the American Inn project at five P.M. And we have a public hearing on the Cobblestone project on Tuesday, uh, next week at five P.M. And then our regular city council meeting is going to be on May third at five thirty P.M. Immediately following this meeting, we do have an EDA meeting, uh, with that being said, this meeting is adjourned.